I'd like to call the Township of Ocean Planning Board Meeting of November 25, 2019, to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Here. Can we have the salute to the flag, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on July 19, 2019. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We have a no smoking policy. Also, no new cases will be started after 10:30 p.m. and no new testimony taken after 11:00 p.m. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS, and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to explain our current Vice Chair, Estelle Klose, has decided to resign from her position, so I'm asking any member of the board to make a motion to elect a new Vice Chair, Mr. Good. That's Mr. Good.
Okay. Oh, you want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion for Mr. Good to be the Vice Chair.
You second.
And thank Estelle for all she did.
Here, here. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Next, we have Resolution Memorializations, the first one being jet properties two, Block four, Lot four, 42 Whale Pond Road, Ocean, New Jersey. Would someone make a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll second.
I'll third. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have another Resolution Memorialization titled as PL Real TLLC, Block 12.01, Lot six, 220 Pinewood Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey. Would someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have another Resolution Memorialization titled as PL Real TLLC, Block 12.01, Lot six, 220 Pinewood Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey. Would someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Oh. Also, minutes for approval. October 28, 2019, regular meeting. I was not in attendance at that meeting, but would someone make a motion, please, to...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Okay, next, we have carried case number three, Scott Delaney, Block 35, Lot five, 1208 West Park Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey, R-1.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, let's just state for the record the carried cases.
Okay, carried cases, and these cases are carried until December 16, 2019. Case number one is Mamanau, which is Block 33.14, Lot two, 710 West Park Avenue, Ocean. The second carried case carried to the same date, December 16, 2019, would be 1111 Highway 35 LLC, Block 209, Lot eight, 1111 Highway 35, Ocean, New Jersey. Now, we have the carried case, case number three, as I mentioned before, Scott Delaney, Block 35, Lot five, 1206 West Park Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey, R-1. Mr. Gazarovski.
As council's coming up, let me just affirm with our Director, Mr. Kirk, those cases are carried without further notice, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, before I start these cases, I always have to express my thanks to the Secretaries who do the bulk of the work in all of these matters. They've done a great job helping us get to this point. My name is Ron Gazarovski. I'm an attorney with offices at Red Bank, New Jersey. I represent the applicant in this matter, who is also the owner of the property. His name is Dr. Scott Delaney. He is a resident of this community, as well as has a place of business in this community that is just there. It's the Oakhurst veterinarian hospital, which is essentially the safe. This evening, I intend to call him as my first witness, simply to set the stage for what we're doing. I will then call Jeffrey Carr, who is a licensed professional planner, as well as a civil engineer, who has prepared the plans this evening. Lastly, I will call Mr. Frank Miskovich, who is also a professional engineer, who will give testimony with regard to issues of roads concerning traffic, traffic safety, and primarily ingress and egress onto the roadway in question, which would appear to be perhaps an issue which is of most interest to this board. Initially, I'm going to have three exhibits marked. I think if I mark them initially as A1, A2, and A3, I'll then walk my witnesses through that, so if I could see that now, I'd like to...
Mr. Gazarovski, before we proceed, I'd like to ask the Secretary to mark our packet B1. Thank you.
Mr. Gazarovski, what we normally do in this particular board is we have our professionals, at least paraphrase their report, so we can key in on the salient issues.
That's right. But might I not have perhaps at least, while they're speaking, if I have one of these exhibits up, particularly perhaps A2, as the board is listening, they could also be looking at the exhibit.
That would be fine.
Okay? I just want to identify yourself and identify the exhibits.
Why? No, I'm not sensitive. You tease me how you want.
Mark this, I think. We'll have to have him attend to it.
Why don't we get him sworn in right away?
If you'd raise your right hand, please, to try and tell the truth, the whole truth, enough of the truth, hope you got it.
I do. Jeffrey J. Carr, C.A.R.R., and Paul with Vern of Lynch and Dees, Lot...
I'm going to go through the exhibits.
You're sorry?
I'm going to go through the exhibits.
Oh, and he wants to mark some exhibits.
You have them number forty, so...
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah.
So? You want me to describe them?
Counsel...
I want you to have a little description, probably a little bit of history.
Is this exhibit something that has been filed with the board?
Yes, all three exhibits, all of them have been filed with the board.
All right, we can mark them A1 anyway.
A1 is just the plat of the minor subdivision, last revised 9/6/18. A2 is a plot plan exhibit. It's a two-sheet set.
What does that show?
This basically shows the subdivision of the property, as well as an exhibit that shows a proposed dwelling and the driveway access to that proposed dwelling.
That would be the ingress and egress for the proposed lot, right?
That is correct.
Why don't we just stick with those two for now, and let's go back to A1, that may bring a little bit of clarity to what we're talking about.
Mr. Higgins, would you please either read your report or synopsize it?
Sure, I'll read it because of the complexity.
Thank you.
The applicant is proposing to subdivide an existing 158,768 square foot lot into two lots. Lot 5.01 will be a 72,271 square foot parcel with an existing residence, and Lot 5.02 will be an 86,497 square foot flag lot with a width of 40 feet, 40.61 feet. The site is 158,768 square foot lot with 229.84 feet of frontage on West Park Avenue and a depth in excess of 540 feet. It's occupied by a single-family residence with extensive driveway, all of which is situated on the northern front, one-third of the lot. The balance of the lot is vacant and wooded, with a small area of wetlands located on the eastern edge of the lot at the approximate midpoint of the lot depth. The site is situated at the immediate east of the Toll Brothers Enclave Development. West Park Avenue at this location slopes steeply, with the apex of the slope a short distance to the west of the subject site. Variance analysis, the site's located with the R1 residential zone. The zone permits single-family residences on minimum 40,000 square foot lots. Following variances are required. A two-foot change in grade, the ordinance requires a variance to be granted for any change in grade of more than two feet. The plan proposes changes in grade in excess of two feet along the proposed driveway. The applicant should testify, should provide testimony regarding the reasons for the grade change in grade. It appears that some of the grade change is in the wetlands transition buffer area. Minimum lot width and frontage, the ordinance requires a minimum lot width of 150 feet and a minimum lot frontage of 60 percent of the lot width, or 90 feet in this instance. Proposed Lot 5B has a width and frontage of 40.61 feet. The area of Lot 5.02, and I should have, the last sentence should have been 5.02, has a width frontage of 40.61 feet. The area of Lot 5.02 that will be developed for the residence exceeds the minimum dimensions and area that are required for a lot in the R1 zone. Consequently, from the standpoint of creating a reasonable development of the site, I have no concerns regarding the proposal. However, the issue of lot frontage is not just the configuration of the lot. In this instance, there are concerns regarding safe and adequate access to West Park Avenue due to the slope and vertical curve of the street and the traffic speeds, both posted and actual, along that section of West Park Avenue. The application proposes two driveways within the 229-foot lot frontage, where the full conformity would result in two driveways within a minimum 300 feet of frontage. At several technical review meetings, it was suggested to the applicant that only one driveway be provided to serve both lots and that it be located as far to the east side of the parcel as possible, so that it would be as far from the top of the vertical curve as possible. The application continues to propose two driveways. Given that there are few positive planning reasons to support the subdivision, providing only one driveway, which is approximately 60 feet center line to center line, farther away from the top of the vertical curve, would provide a significant positive reason for the granting of the variances. Since adding even one residence would increase the number of movements in and out of the site, the determination that the site access is safe is a legitimate concern. Waivers. Tree location and preservation plan, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the requirement to submit a tree location and preservation plan. The plan proposes a specific location of the proposed house and driveway on Lot 5.02. It is clear that approximately one-quarter acre of wooded area will be removed. There is no information regarding the number of qualifying trees that will be taken down. Consequently, there is no way I can calculate the potential obligation. Consequently, I cannot recommend any waiver of this requirement at this time. Other comments, the survey and plan show an area of wetlands and open water and delineate a wetlands transition buffer area. A significant portion of the proposed driveway on proposed Lot 5.02 is located within this buffer transition area, but there is no proposed buffer averaging to show that it is feasible. This should be addressed by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I have reported dated today, but it's been, it's quite long, it's kind of technical, it's been written over a period of about two years, so there's only a few things today, so let me try to summarize this, so we don't eat up the whole time period that the applicant has to present tonight. There have been a number of issues. The key issue from day one has been the safety of a driveway at this location on West Park Avenue. I continue to have that concern. It's spelled out od nauseam under item two of my letter, which takes up about three or four pages. But the key item is site distance on what they call a crest-type vertical curve, and stopping site distance on a roadway with that kind of a downslope, where an eastbound vehicle coming off the crest of the curve, heading downhill in an easterly direction. I have a few illustrations. On page four of my letter, I was trying to take a snip of some of the parameters, of an illustration determining some of the parameters that are involved. I could not get it to print well, so I had Amy thankfully put it on the back of the last page, just so you can see the parameters involved, the driver's eye height, the height of an object trying to be viewed, the hump in the way, if you will, et cetera. I have concerns. My professional opinion is that nowhere on the frontage of the site is there a categorically safe driveway location. There is some engineering judgment involved in that determination, and I understand that the applicant has an engineer to talk to some of that, so we'll wait on the details of that, maybe make it easier. Freshwater wetlands, there are wetlands on the site. The applicant has obtained an LOI. As Jim pointed out, the driveway grading is now shown. It demonstrates that a variance is needed. I have no problem with the grading variance. What I've asked for repeatedly is what the transition area averaging plan would look like, so that we know that it's feasible, but I do not see that yet. With regard to stormwater management, the current addition of the plan indicates an increase in the previous coverage at somewhere around 13,000, 13,001 under square feet. That qualifies as a major development under state stormwater regulations. Again, I've asked for information supporting the fact that this is feasible, not the whole design, but we have not gotten that yet. With regard to utilities, I believe this should be classified as a minor subdivision because Toll, as part of its development, has physically already extended the sanitary sewer to the site, so that off-site improvement does not need to be extended to the site, it's now on the site. Water is shown on the plat as being extended from Toll. It will never happen. There's a 13-foot retaining wall. There's an easement for it, but the physical water connection, I understand from Toll and New Jersey America, will not be made. There's water right in West Park Avenue. Since it's on the site, essentially, that would mean that it doesn't need to be extended, so it's a minor subdivision as the classification. I've asked for clarification on that, hasn't happened. With regard to, basically, there's just some technical issues out there, so I have a problem with another access or any access, although certainly everyone's entitled to the reasonable use of their property, but there is already a single-family dwelling which conforms to the zoning, for the most part, on there, so it's up to the board, but my position is, you know, I can't support it in terms of a safety issue at this point, based on what I know.
Understood, Mr. Fitzgerald.
You left it there.
Doctor, would you identify yourself in the following fashion? You are in fact the owner of this property, are you not?
Correct.
And you do in fact also presently reside at a home which is located on the entire property itself.
That is correct.
And you're coming in this evening seeking to secure a necessary subdivision, as well as a variance, to construct a second dwelling on the proposed lot.
That's correct.
And you've listened to the comments of both Mr. Fitzgerald, as well as the planner, and it would certainly appear their concern is with regard to the proposed ingress and egress on this new lot. Can you tell the board, if you would, how long you have lived at these residence?
I've lived at this residence for a little over 20 years, since early 2009.
And when you acquired the property in question, was it a vacant lot, or was it a lot that had a home constructed on it?
It was a vacant lot.
Okay. And did you yourself, through subcontractors and contractors, build a house which is presently there?
Yes.
And what's the approximate square footage of that house?
It's about 5,300 square feet.
Okay. Now, the house as it's presently located, as with regard to the driveway that is presently there, is that the driveway that was placed there at the time that you constructed your house?
Yes.
Now, if you recall, when you constructed the house, you made application to the appropriate authority and this municipality to secure a building from it, did you not?
Yes.
And I take it you also had to submit a site plan and a survey for the location of the house?
Yes.
And I trust also for the location of the driveway?
That's correct.
And ultimately, after doing that, you in fact received a certificate of occupancy?
That is correct.
So, the certificate of occupancy...
Mr. Gazarovski, I'm starting to... Could both you and Dr. Delaney move the microphones closer, because we're recording this for a team, and I understand...
I have a sander.
Speak loudly into the microphone.
Why don't I use this? I'm better off with... Thank you. I think my last question was that when you moved into the house, you had secured a certificate of occupancy.
That is correct.
And at the time you secured that certificate of occupancy and the house was constructed, that is where the driveway in question was located?
Yes.
And I take it that location of the driveway, as far as the location of the house, were approved by the construction officials of the Township of Ocean?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, when you first constructed the house, who was living in the home?
My family.
Okay, and what did that consist of?
Myself, my wife, and my three daughters.
Okay. Now, at the time that you constructed the house, were you and your wife both licensed drivers of the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And did both of you have cars that you utilized to go in and out of your home?
Yes.
Now, at a kind of a point in time, with regard to the individuals who were living at the house, were there a number of licensed drivers? And tell me, at one given point, what the greatest number of licensed drivers were?
At one point, all three of my daughters were licensed drivers, so there were five of us driving.
Okay. Now, in addition to that, were there anyone in your household who also served, perhaps, as help for your wife, such as gardeners, maids, house cleaners, things of that nature?
Yes, we have all sorts of people coming and going, from UPS trucks to water delivery trucks to landscapers, excavators to put in my sewer.
Okay. Now, during that 20-year period of time, we know that the driveway was always presently there, correct?
Correct.
At any time during that 20-year period of time, are you aware of any accident, accident which occurred by anyone who is either ingressing or egressing your driveway?
There has never been an accident egressing or entering or exiting my driveway.
Okay. Now, would you just describe to the board what you typically do when you particularly egress from your driveway, making either a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn? Oh, by the way, do you know what the speed limit is on the roadway?
I believe it's 40?
Okay. Whatever it may be. What steps do you take when you exit your driveway, as far as ensuring that you're safely exiting and also as well as entering?
I pull up the end of the driveway, and I look both ways, and if there's no cars coming, I exit.
Okay. You know, it's always a danger, but was there ever a close call while you were doing this?
There's never been a close call.
To your knowledge, did your wives or your daughters ever experience problems?
I have never been told that they ever experienced a close call entering or exiting the driveway.
Okay. Now, with regard to the driveway in question that's there, you would make both left-hand as well as right-hand turns out of the driveway?
That is correct.
And I think maybe I've got my grades wrong. One of the questions is with regard to when you're making a left-hand turn, particularly since you're crossing over a lane of traffic, you've got to be observant as far as what you're seeing when you look to the west, or making a left-hand turn, correct?
Yes.
Did you personally ever experience any difficulties with that?
No.
How about your wife?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Now, did you teach your daughters how to drive, or did they go to driving school?
Both.
Both, okay. And I take it that there was a given point in time that you or your wife would drive with them while they were learning how to drive?
Yes.
During that period of time, were they also ingressing and egressing that driveway?
Yes, they were.
Any difficulties that you're aware that they were having at that time?
No.
At any time for the perhaps hundreds of people who have visited your house, whether it be for holidays, gatherings, or the like, did anybody ever express any concern to you with regard to pulling out of that driveway, whether it be daytime, evening, or the like?
No, never even heard of anybody having a close call. No one said to me, gee, I almost had an accident going out of your driveway.
Okay, now, you're aware of the fact that with regard to the house which you're seeking to construct, but for the narrowest, strike that, but for the width of the property in the front, it is basically, and I think as Mr. Higgins has acknowledged, it's a conforming lot, is it not?
I assume so, yes. It's a two-acre lot on a four-acre, on a 3.68 acre lot.
Right. Other than the narrowest of the lot frontage, it's a conforming lot, except for perhaps some engineering data with regard to grades and whatnot that are easily remedied and provided.
Yes.
Okay. Now, with regard to the driveway which is proposed, that is located to the west of...
East.
The, I'm sorry. It's east of the existing driveway? What am I missing here? It's east, it's east. Correct?
The new one is east of the old.
East of the existing driveway. You wouldn't believe it, I was in a Marine car, would you, that I can't tell east from west? But looking at the proposed driveway, which is located to the right of the existing driveway, that in fact has greater site distances looking toward the west than the existing driveway has.
Yes.
So, in your mind, as just an ordinary driver, do you think that that would pose to you as a driver any greater difficulties than what's presently there?
No.
Now, as a matter of common sense, what are your thoughts with regard to having one driveway, but twice as much traffic using that one driveway? Not as an expert, just as a layperson. And your experience in the existing driveway?
I would think that would be problematic, because if you were going to enter and exit, if there was another family entering or exiting, you may have crossed paths in the same driveway. Plus, there's also the issue of who's in charge of the, who's going to keep it clear of snow and keep it maintained and so forth. It just doesn't seem, it also seems to me, just as a matter of common sense, I'm not an engineer, that if you have, say, two people in my house entering and exiting, and you have two people in the other house entering and exiting, and you put them all through one driveway, that's the same number of cars pulling out onto the same street, just on one driveway. It doesn't seem to make common sense to me that it would be any more difficult or any safer to have twice the number of cars from one driveway...
as to you as a driver any greater difficulties than what's presently there?
No.
Now, as a matter of common sense, what are your thoughts with regard to having one driveway but twice as much traffic using that one driveway? Not as an expert, just as a layperson. And your experience in the existing driveway?
I would think that would be problematic because if you were going to enter and exit, if there was another family entering or exiting, you may have crossed paths in the same driveway. Plus, there's also the issue of who's in charge of the, who's going to keep it clear of snow and keep it maintained and so forth. It just doesn't seem, it also seems to me, just as a matter of common sense, I'm not an engineer, that if you have, say, two people in my house entering and exiting, and you have two people in the other house entering and exiting, and you put them all through one driveway, that's the same number of cars pulling out onto the same street just on one driveway. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to make common sense to me that it would be any more difficult or any safer to have twice the number of cars from one driveway as it would be to have half the number of cars from each driveway. That's why I don't, plus I don't want to have a driveway that I have to share with a neighbor and worry about who's going to snow blow it, who's going to keep it clear, who's going to fix it if it's broken.
Well, you're speaking now from just simply your perspective as a homeowner of one of the lots. But in the future, did you discuss both with your attorney other than me as well as the engineer, what would have to take place in order to establish deeds of easement and things of that nature so you would have two property owners sharing an easement over one driveway? And that's something you'd like to avoid, correct?
Correct.
Having said all of that, having said all of that, is it also your goal that you'll be, you believe that you'll be able to demonstrate to this board, both by your engineer as well as your traffic consultant, that this will be a safe ingress and egress because at the end of the day, that's the most important thing, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay. I have no further questions. Doctor Delaney?
Board has any? Board have any questions for this witness?
I do.
I do, Joe.
When you purchased the property twenty years ago, apparently, right?
Yes.
Were you planning on putting two houses on this property?
No.
I have more questions. Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. We're talking about the driveway. I'd like to see where on the map is because we're kind of, I'm looking at what I have in front of me and I can't really distinguish.
Can we call the engineer up to show that to you so that...
Or where the lot is, the lot that you're subdividing.
The lot is back here. This is my house. The usually driveway we come in here, and that's on another page, but the lot's back here.
Go ahead. Upper left, just tell them what exhibit you're looking at.
A1, on A1. And A2 shows the actual driveway and the proposed house.
Doc, let me ask you one further question, doctor. At the time that you first acquired this property and you constructed your house, could you describe to the board what the surround, what the area surrounding your lot looked like?
It was all, when I bought the property, I bought the property because it was R1 zone for one acre homes. Our home was on a three-point-six-eight acre lot. And with various pressures through the town over years and years, and having attended several dozen meetings as you all have to the Toll Brothers situation and even prior to that, and subsequently, the, my entire western border is now been regraded to be as high as sixteen feet above the grade of my property with a four-hundred-foot retaining wall against my property and homes that are about six per acre within seventy-five feet of my house. And so, it occurred, had occurred to me that, well, to retain some of the value of my home at some point, and I have no immediate plans, it occurred to me that I might want to subdivide my lot so that at some point in time I could get another two-acre lot out of my four-acre or three-point-six-eight acre lot.
So, board, any other questions of, doctor?
I do not, and I don't think any of the other board members do, but I'd like to take this opportunity to open this portion up to the public if they have any questions for this particular witness. I see no one. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Let me next call, if I may, Mr. Jeffrey Carr, who is a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey. Well, you've been sworn already, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the board, would you just very briefly walk your way through your qualifications, just giving us your educational background as well as your professional activity as an engineer and whether or not you've appeared before similar boards such as this one, although perhaps not this particular board?
Yes. I have a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Science in Civil Engineering, both from New Jersey Institute of Technology, North College of Engineering at the time, now it's New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner, certified municipal engineer, and a certified floodplain manager of the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing engineering and planning for a long time, over thirty-five years. I don't recall appearing before this board, but I've appeared before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey on similar type applications, residential, commercial, industrial, and other type applications.
Will we accept his credentials?
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, are you asking him to testify only as a PE?
Well, she was a planner.
Okay.
Both qualifications, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Carr, one of the board members expressed, I'm not going to use the word concern, but wanted to perhaps thoroughly understand, number one, what exists there presently, and number two, what you are proposing as a result of the subdivision. So, if you would, just walk us through your exhibit A1 and A2 and just perhaps just give us a brief thought with regard to what exhibit A3 shows.
All right. To set the stage, we're before you for a minor subdivision to create two lots out of one lot. And that's the essence of exhibit A1, the plot of the minor subdivision. Exhibit A2, which I'll describe in a little more detail, is a plot plan exhibit. While it shows a proposed driveway and it shows a proposed house, I want to be clear that that was requested of us to demonstrate that we can develop the site and provide for a driveway, hence the variance for the grading of the driveway due to some of the topography in that area. However, that is not the proposed dwelling. We're not proposing any construction at this time. We're not proposing to construct the driveway graded as such, and we're not proposing that particular house or in that location. It's just merely to demonstrate to the board and to the board's professionals that that lot can be developed.
Mr., let me just interrupt you for one second. You make the comment that the house will not necessarily be located in that particular location, but can we make the representation to the board that wherever it is located in that portion of the property, in the future, we will not be seeking any variances for rear yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, indoor the like?
That is correct. The plot plan as well as the minor subdivision show the boundaries of the property, the existing property. It shows the subdivision line, the existing lot or proposed lot 5.01, which is the existing dwelling, and then the proposed lot 5.02, which is the, will be the rear lot. The only variance we are requesting is the lot frontage where ninety foot would be required, and we're proposing just over forty feet, and that is due to the existing lot width itself. So, simply, simply put... The chart on the bottom shows the zoning requirements, and as you can see, looking at the zone requirements, we are conforming to all of those except for lot width. As an example, lot area, we are required to have forty thousand square feet. Proposed lot 5.01 will be one-point-six-five-nine acres, and proposed lot 5.02 will be one-point-nine-eight-six acres. Lot 5.02, which will be the vacant lot, is more than double of what's required on that, in that zone there. And we're almost double on the front lot there. So, we are significantly larger than what's allowed on here. All of our setbacks are conforming.
Can you tell me what the distance is from...
Mr. Gassar, you're not being, you're not being picked up in the microphone.
What the proposed front of the house, the distance it will be from the front line by the roadway?
The existing house?
Right. No, the proposed house.
The proposed house would be, I mean, just that, a rough idea would, would probably be something in the neighborhood of about three-hundred-and-fifty feet away, and that's basically due to the existing wetlands on a portion of the lot and just the width of the entranceway there. If I could refer to exhibit A2, that probably shows it a little bit better here. While we could shift this house in different locations here, I basically just chose this area because it's somewhat of a flatter area. The property drops off to the rear, to some wetlands in the rear of the property on the adjacent property, and you can see the driveway as it comes in. And the one area where we would require some, the variance for height on the two-foot of fill or change it graded two feet is basically where it curves in this area here. It would be back on grade for the, basically the last third of the driveway, and the front third of the driveway would be also, but just to get uniform slopes in that area, and because of the topographic changes in there, we would need some change in there. But basically, it would be a cut fill situation. We don't have to export, we don't have to import, we would just be shifting some excavation around there to make the grades work on site.
Would that change in grade in any way impact the water runoff on the property or cause any drainage problems?
Minimal amount. As you, as I indicated, you know, we'd have a proposed house on here. It's almost two acres in size. It's more than adequate. We have enough open space. You can just see just in that area there. And of course, on the final design, we'd have to do a lot-specific house. It would probably include some roof drainage systems, some recharge systems, and then we'd have to address the runoff on the driveway as well. But this is a typical lot on a single-family house.
Would it be fair to say that even if this board were to grant this subdivision, it would still be contingent upon the applicant satisfying all of those conditions which might be opposed by the construction officials?
That's correct. That would go through the normal building permit process as would any individual single-family home.
I also noted when I drove past the property that on the frontage of the lot, there was a lot of undergrowth. I'm understanding that all of that will be removed.
On the existing lot, the vegetation that is in front of Mr. Delaney's house predominantly would remain. You can see as you come in, he angles his driveway and he's got a turnaround and then a side entry garage. That would all remain. So, the front of the lot, as you, as you drive down a road or as you, as you view it from West Park Avenue, would remain the same. We would only need some vegetation removed for the driveway itself, and then we would do additional clearing along the right-of-way on West Park Avenue to provide additional site distances in there. We have received county approval. One of the conditions of the county approval is to dedicate some property in there, and that is to assist them with the proposed improvements for West Park Avenue that they have.
Now, you made application to the county. Did you also show the proposed second driveway?
Yes, we did.
What was their response to that?
Again, they, they basically looked at the site distances as well. We provided them with a profile of West Park Avenue. We had to analyze the site distances on West Park Avenue for the driveways. We had to show the proposed improvements that the county will construct. We're not obligated to construct them, but basically those improvements include additional center turning lane, widening on both sides of the road, and shoulders on both sides of the road as well, and then as indicated, center turning lane. So, instead of two lanes, one in each direction, there'll actually be three with the center lane in there, and then shoulders will be. We be required to do some additional grading in there where the proposed curve will be and to clear the vegetation along the frontage of the site to improve site distance.
Has the applicant agreed to satisfy all of the conditions that the county may impose, including some dedication for road widening?
Correct. We have final approval from the county, subject to us actually dedicating the property.
Okay. Apart from the issue of the driveways, do you feel confident that whatever comments have been made by both Mr. Higgins as well as Mr. Fitzgerald with regard to the use of the property itself, that you can satisfy all of those conditions?
Yes, as I indicated, and we've met a couple of times on technical workshop meetings and have addressed some of those issues. I believe that we've addressed those issues and satisfactory in that, again, it's a, it's a two-acre lot that we will be constructing one additional house on. This is not uncommon. I've had these discussions with Mr. Fitzgerald. Certainly, we can provide grading and drainage adequate to the engineering department to address any concerns that we have there. Wetlands was, was brought up as a condition as well. We do have wetlands in here, a portion of the, of the site there, which is why the driveway makes the angle in here. We have a letter of interpretation from the NJDEP addressing that as well as the required buffers in there, and we have had preliminary discussions, not myself, but environmental consultant who has been retained by Dr. Delaney, has met several times with the NJDEP and discussed this application with them, and it qualifies for a road crossing permit so that we, we are confident that we would be able to obtain that. Of course, since we aren't proposing a specific house at this time or a specific driveway design, that application has not been met or not been made yet, but we have every expectation based on our discussions with the DEP that that would be issued.
Now, let's just talk briefly about the fact that this existing lot with its frontage is not conforming. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And this would be what is normally referred to in the planning community as a flag lot?
Correct.
As I understand, a flag lot, it means that the front portion of it, where you have the ingress and egress is basically the flag pole, and the rear portion is the flag, hence the term flag lot.
That is correct. It's thinner up in front and then widens out to a fully conforming lot in the rear.
In the rear where the houses to be constructed, if you know the, if you were to take away the, the flag, would you still have a conforming lot as far as setbacks and things of that nature?
Yes, all of the setbacks are shown on the property, so the proposed building would be all within the building setbacks, so it would meet that, it would meet height requirements, it would meet impervious coverage requirements, and any of the other bulk variances, we would meet on that. And as I indicated, being such a large lot here, we have quite a bit of flexibility on locating that house in various places. Again, we haven't located individual trees, but at the time in a plot plan, plan, design, then we would do that. Most of this area or some of this area is cleared, so that's where the house was basically situated, and we reoriented or resized the house based on, based on the best for the property.
Now, you were present when Dr. Delaney described to the board what this property looked like when he first acquired it, were you not?
Yes.
Would you agree with me in accepting his testimony, what it was, is that the character of this surrounding area has changed demonstrably since he purchased this property twenty years ago?
Yes, the area itself used, well, it's owned R1 for basically one-acre lots of forty thousand square foot lots. Over, over time, various other entities or, or properties were, were developed. On this side of the road, essentially, it's a single family as you go up to Hope, Hope Road. This area here basically was all open, under... This area here basically was all open, undeveloped area. Mr. Delaney's lot was developed by him, and then there was an existing dwelling on the lot to the immediate right or east of him. And for the most part, everything else on this side of the property or this side of West Park Avenue was undeveloped. The enclave or the development that is under construction by Toll Brothers was once in the R1 zone also. So that would have been developed as 40,000 square foot lots as well. Over time, in recent time, that's been rezoned. That area's been rezoned, so it's changed that area. So basically, the R1 on this side is basically very limited to just a couple lots here. Mr. Delaney's being one. And then across the street, there are other types of development. The healthcare facility across the street and to the west, church to the west, school down to the right-hand side. So even the other side of the road is not developed primarily as in accordance with the R1 requirements.
Well, is not Dr. Delaney's property immediately adjacent to what is now presently a high-intensity use as far as the number of units per acre?
That is correct. It's a high-density development. You can see on the plot plan exhibit, as well as, the plot plan exhibit shows it better. You can see the lots on the top of the page in the label "Enclave Way", and you can see the size of those lots compared to a lot next door. What this plan doesn't show is some of the other items or features that Mr. Delaney had explained. The rear of these lots is developed with a retaining wall. The wall is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 16 feet high, and that goes almost the majority of Mr. Delaney's property. So the grades have changed significantly in that area, and now there's a wall along that side there.
And how many acres is Dr. Delaney's property in total?
3.68 acres.
So theoretically, I'm not saying it's going to happen or did happen, but theoretically, if in fact his property was incorporated into that adjacent application, how many possible units could there be placed on his property?
I've never done a calculation on there, but just looking at it, just comparing it to the property next door, you can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, roughly eight, eight properties that border his property here. So, I mean, easily, you can get eight, depending on what the depths and the road widths and stuff.
Jeff, can we just correct the statement? Those eight properties don't border Mr. Delaney's property, do they?
There's actually a buffer strip.
Yeah, the buffer, yeah. Just for the record, I wanted to get that.
Well, it's all, it's all part of the, it's all part of the Toll Brothers piece of property.
There is a buffer between his property and his property.
Yes, there's a buffer as part of the enclave, but it's all part of the enclave development. There are eight properties that are adjacent to his property as part of the enclave project.
Apart from the issue of the driveway, have you formed an opinion as to whether or not the creation of a second lot on this property would in any way adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood?
No, it wouldn't. Essentially, you'd end up with one additional single-family home on a county road. There is one adjacent single-family home that is on one acre. And actually, if you look at the key map, you'll see that that one-acre property is located along West Park Avenue, and the rear of that property wraps around to a much larger property to the east. So that's a limited property there with a second property behind it. So it'd be similar there. It would be developed, basically, other than the single variance that we have, it would be developed in accordance with the R1 single-family zone, and it would be much better as far as intensity or density is to the adjacent properties that have been developed. And this would be single-family, as opposed to some of the other types of uses across the street on West Park.
Can you just run us through the standards that the applicant has to satisfy, as well as pointing out any negatives which there might exist as a result of the granting of this?
Well, this would be...
Before you do that, did you also prepare a small exhibit to show in color what the surrounding area looks like?
Yes.
What exhibit number are you proposing?
I think 04.
A.
I'm sorry, A4.
A4.
A3 was referred to in the beginning, but it hasn't really been discussed.
Correct.
Save that for the... Why don't you just approach the board, because I know it's hard to see...
Why don't you give us somebody first?
Do you have extra copies of it?
Yes.
We have three or four copies.
If you have extra copies there, you can pass around.
Show where the doctor's house is located, so everybody up there can go to look for it.
Could you give us a general description of it before he starts talking about details?
If you could, Mr. Carr, would you just advise the board, where you secure this exhibit from and what purpose of demonstrating it is?
This is a Googler map. It's somewhat recent, but not up to date. You can see in the, basically, the center of the plan, you can see the enclave development under construction here. As you can see, the, basically, vegetation removed, construction of some dwellings, and the construction of the roadways there. To the immediate right of that area, well, look at first. Across the center page, going left to right, is West Park Avenue. So the enclave project would be just below that, on the, on the south side of the plan. Just to the immediate right of that, you'll see a small area, and you'll actually see the curved road for Dr. Delaney's house. That's basically where he is, right in the center of the project. Then you'll see, just to the east of him, you'll see the other single-family residence. You're going to see a large area around that.
Does anybody, does anybody see, referring to as far as the location? Would you like Mr. Carr to step forward and just point it out? One second. Now, just at the conclusion of where we're going, give us the standards which you feel are applicable to the granting of this as far as the affirmative and negative.
Well, I think with the positive criteria here is that we're placing development in accordance with the R1 zone in an area where it's supposed to be. This area, or this open space area, is the R1 zone. I described the healthcare facilities just to the upper-left of his, the church a little further west on West Park Road, the school to the, down to the right. And I'm not sure what the facility is here, but you can see a major building and parking area there. So just in this stretch of West Park Avenue, there's essentially two single-family homes, one of which being Mr. Delaney. So certainly, we're developing this property in accordance with the R1 zone requirements. I think we satisfied a positive criteria by keeping population densities where the master plan and zone plan had intended it to be. The negative criteria, I think, can be satisfied fairly easy in stating that the development of this lot with one additional single-family home does not impact the zone plan or the master plan. Certainly, the master plan and zone plan anticipated this being developed as such. A lot of this area behind Dr. Delaney will not be developed because of existing streams of wetlands there.
Excuse me, could you use a microphone, please?
And certainly, it doesn't set a precedence of what can be done in here based on the development in and around Dr. Delaney, especially when you take in consideration a large portion of this area being rezoned a number of years ago to a higher density. So I think in both of those situations, we satisfy the positive criteria and the negative criteria.
Now, you listened to the comments of my friends, Mr. Fitzgerald and the planner as well. And in listening to their comments about the use of the property, I did not discern in any of their comments that they were objecting to the fact that an additional house could be added or would be added, correct?
That's correct. I think on the contrary, I think Mr. Higgins had actually spoke in the affirmative that development of this, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think he said that he saw no problem with the development of this and the granting of the variance.
So the real issue deals with the driveway?
As I understand it, that's correct.
And that would relate to the number of cars which are ingressing and egressing onto the property, but whether there's one driveway or two driveways, there would still be the same number of cars?
That is correct.
I have no further questions at this point.
Any board members have any questions for this witness? Go ahead.
So Bill and Jim, has anything been said here to change your thoughts about the traffic and the site and all that kind of stuff?
Now, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need the testimony of the traffic expert. But, you know, I've read Bill's report, and my opinion is basically based on Bill's opinion in his report. I drove down that street a number of times. I drove down today specifically with this application in mind. And quite frankly, I drove by Dr. Delaney's driveway before I realized I was there. So I still have some concerns. And while I understand it's been 20 years and there hasn't been, according to Dr. Delaney, even a near incident, that doesn't mean there's not an issue there with safety.
And just from the, I guess, just from the map, the whole idea is that the middle school is there, right? And buses come back and forth there and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, there have been accidents in that area, but they haven't related to the ingress and egress from the driveway. In fact, there was one there about less than a month ago on a Sunday morning.
I have a question. What is the distance? What would the distance be between the two driveways with the proposed?
The distance between the two driveways would be about 60 feet.
Would that be from center of driveway to center of driveway?
Roughly center of driveway to center of driveway.
But how about from edge of driveway to edge of driveway?
Maybe over 40 feet, 45 feet.
For the record, we allow a driveway to be within five feet of a property lot. So you could have two adjacent lots, each with 400 feet of frontage, and the driveway still could have as little as 10 feet separating them physically.
That's correct.
Are you, I have another question. Are you proposing, are you willing to, I guess, the way I would say is that, are you willing to stipulate that you would only build one house additionally on this property?
Yeah, that's the application.
Let me make their representation as the attorney, since I have some, you know, supposed obligations. And that is the representation.
So you, so we won't be seeing you back for now. Someone else is going to want to put three houses here if you get the division.
Ron, you got to speak into the microphone.
Let's call the doctor back and put him under oath.
No, we'll accept your representation.
I'm just clarifying, because you're only asking for a subdivision, correct?
We'll include a deed restriction in that subdivision if that is something you wish, that it can't be developed further.
Okay, that's what I was asking, just clarifying.
It's a good question. I've been down this road for 40 years, so...
No, I've seen, I've seen things come back.
Me too, Mr. Gauzroski.
I'm sorry?
You and I have been around for a long time.
50 years I've been doing this.
I've only been...
You guys look great for as old as you are.
Thanks.
Anyway. So, open question. So the width requirement for the zone is what?
The width requirement would be 90 feet. We have 40 feet here.
Right, and what's, if I could just ask a few follow-ups? What's the actual width for the property?
Wait, 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 gentlemen.
The width in a property is 230 feet. So we don't have sufficient width to make two conforming lot widths on here.
But you could.
But again, no, we don't. We don't have sufficient. You would need 300 feet in order to be a lot width on both requirements. But again, speaking to Mr. Fitzgerald's point there, that the ordinance allows you to put a driveway five feet from another, from your property line. So effectively, you could have driveways 10 feet. So the issue isn't really the lot width in here. If we had, if we had a 600-foot lot...
If I can make a suggestion in order to make the next meeting more productive, it probably, I've been asking for a concept buffer transition. If you don't think you need that, perhaps some type of brief letter saying, "Look, here's where we intend to go. Here's the permit by rule or permit by whatever it is. Here's the criteria, and here's how we can meet it," so that the board has some comfort level. You know what I'm saying? And there's something here to look at.
That's fine. Mr. Di Benedetto, do you have another question?
My concern is just the long driveway there. I, you know, I don't know who's...
300 feet west of Dr. Delaney's driveway entrance?
No, no. It's west of the edge of the plan, the top of the plan.
Okay, so how far, could you just give me a number? How far the crest is from Dr. Delaney's existing driveway?
Is that going to be part of the traffic engineers?
It's part of the traffic.
Yeah, I would suggest that we can wait for the traffic engineer, because he obviously has to consider that.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
I have one quick question related to driveways. Jeff, the northernmost property line, the one that divides the two properties to east and, to north and south, you see which one I'm talking about? That right there, yep. Nope, nope, that's the westernmost. Nope, nope, the northern, the one that divides the two properties, the two lots. Nope, nope, it runs north, runs east-west. Okay, it's, okay, go to the proposed house, okay? The property line immediately north of that proposed house. You show a 20-foot setback there, because it's technically a side yard. Wouldn't it make more sense for that to be a 50-foot setback? So that you would have basically a front yard for that house and not have it jammed right up?
It could be, I don't think...
That's a recommendation I would make.
Given the size of this property, I think just out of practical sense that that's what somebody's going to do anyway. So I don't think that would be a problem to make that a, instead of a 20-foot rear, to make that an 80-foot.
Yes, yeah, that would be my recommendation to the board.
I think common sense, most people would stay away from that anyway.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Just to sum it up, so that we're clear. Any other questions by board members on Carr? And we last asked if there are any public questions for Dr. Delaney. If there were none, do I assume correctly that nobody is here who had any questions for Mr. Carr? And for the record, nobody is raising their hand, so... December 16th, without further notice. Is that right?
Can I check my calendar when I get back?
Sure, if you have any problem, just get a hold of Mr. Kirk's office.
All right, you do the same. Thank you, good to see you. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you.
800 feet.
Fell hard.
Felt right on the side.
Yeah, I understand that.
Oh, maybe that's just a construction issue they had.
Right, they had a construction issue or so on here, but that, this is their, I mean.
Find out.
Get rid of that.
Right, it was just temporary while they were doing work.
It's hard, and I mean, I don't disagree, it's just that we all live in that, everybody. If I do it this way, oh, no question, you can see it.
I mean, in this direction where the school is, this coming down.
That's a good thing. It's a good thing.
Is that a house?
Well, all I did was comment. We quit, we're back in town. It's no, all I did was add, anything today is emboldened, but I don't know. Maybe we quit for now for two years. That's the frustration.
I heard you, New York.
January 10th.
It's funny, all these houses.
Cookie. I told you that one might be a little bit more interesting, we didn't get to the good stuff. Next one's a three-second deal. Joe is winding up, he's got a big speech.
It was all farmland or wetland, and back at the.
He likes animals.
That was a farm here. Junior High, that was Jim, you know.
Oh, Jimmy Stewart. I didn't run. That's all, look, Ron Gazarovski was here earlier.
Before the board.
It's easy to see a truck coming out. People went out chasing my farm past.
Okay, let's go, guys.
I mean, I'm more worried about the kids.
Better round them up to finish up. I can't do anything with these guys.
I'm not jumping down until I.
That's about it, we're ready to go, right? They're here.
Well, yeah, I want to hear what you guys say. A certain amount of.
Santa, Story, $6.
What I've seen.
Oh, my God, I was like, I'm saying to myself.
You can strike the 20 by 28 pavilion.
I just said, I don't want them calling me if somebody.
Gentlemen, you want to get rolling here?
Yeah.
Yeah, he didn't shut up, right?
That's right.
No. They're taking customers away from you.
I'll probably.
Who is?
There you go.
I will probably be here.
Say it easy.
I might not be here.
I might be, I'm coming home that day. So, really.
We may not have a corner. He's taking a poll.
I've never been about to make a.
You didn't ask me. I know the answer.
I know a hard one, but I see. Let's get going here. No, you don't.
Okay, we have the next case on the list, number four, Rising Treetops, Block 17, Lot 1, 111 Monmouth Road, Ocean, New Jersey, R4.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Lynda Lee, I'm an attorney in Spring Lake, and I'm caught copying this. I'm covering Mr. Microbiino, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So, bear with me, not my area of expertise, I've done it a couple times now. All right, so.
Maybe I can assist you with that. So, we're going to mark for identification as B1, Word Packet.
Okay.
And then, we're going to ask our professionals to paraphrase or read their reports, so that we can focus in on the issues, okay?
Okay.
All right.
And I, and I have a, too.
Okay.
Be marked.
Good, so let's start with Chair, I think we should start with Mr. Higgins.
Okay. I'll just summarize, what they're proposing to do is to construct an accessory 20-foot by 28-foot pavilion, which creates no variances at all on the site, and also an 18-foot, square foot freestanding sign. I think it's, I have a question, and maybe the actor can clarify whether it's 18 feet high or 18 square feet. I think it's square feet.
Square feet.
Yeah, square feet, okay. And that requires variances for setback from the street, it's required to be setback 15 feet, it's setback 2 feet, and for the fact that the ordinance requires that for institutional-type uses such as this, that it be a monument sign, and this is basically a freestanding sign, but it's not very high. It's, you know, I looked at the location, you have a fence along South Lincoln Avenue where the sign is proposed, and to set it back 15 feet, you would have a space between the fence and the sign that, to me, would look very awkward. And as far as the issue, whether it's a monument or not, it's got to be up above, the signage has to be up above the fence, so I don't have a real big problem with it.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, I have a report dated today, I have no problem with it.
All right. Ms. Lee, you proceed.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Higgins said, we are here, really, we're here, actually, the pavilion, it's a wooden pavilion, that's already up. That is up, that was part of the application, but it is already constructed. So, we're here really for you to acknowledge that. I brought all the permits and the final approval in, so you could see all that. I don't really know the history of that or how that happened, but I think Mr. Southern would, if you need to know anything about that. Really, we're here about the sign more than anything. And Mr. Kishuba will be testifying as an engineer and a planner. Mr. Kishuba, you are licensed as an engineer and a planner in New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
Excuse me, would you stand and raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help be God?
I do.
Thank you.
If I may just quickly, there was an application probably 15 years ago, to do something like this pavilion, and I'm kind of thinking that somehow it didn't get built then, got built later. I'm not so sure that this isn't something that hasn't been blessed already, kind of a thing, it just kind of got lost in the wayside.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mike just asked me to say that, just in case it wasn't blessed.
There's the two applications, at least, for this property since I've been here, and one of them involved, I think, that pavilion.
Okay. Okay. Getting back to Joe, Kishuba's qualifications, I asked you the question, you're licensed as an engineer and a planner in New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
Have you testified in?
Can you speak to the microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Have you testified in front of various boards in Monmouth County?
I have, including this board.
Okay. Do you accept Mr. Kishuba's qualifications?
Can you just give us the benefit of his educational?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Rowan University in Civil and Structural Engineering, and 15 years' experience in the field as both an engineer and planner.
All right, thank you.
So, just to get to the heart of this, Ms. Lee.
Yes.
I think if you just focus in on Jim's report.
Certainly.
That'll get to the heart of the issue.
Would you all like to see a picture of the sign? I have handouts, if anybody.
Yes.
So, this document that you're handing out now, has it been filed with the board?
It was distributed as an exhibit tonight.
So, it has been on file for 10 days before the hearing.
It was on the plan, but somehow it's not on the plan.
I believe there was a copying error when it was transmitted to the copy center.
So, as far as the board's concerned.
The copy that, the copy that the board secretary has does not have it shown correctly.
All right, so, in terms of documentation.
Isn't it on that, excuse me, isn't it on there?
It is, but the copies that were transmitted to the board, somehow that image was not on the set that was transmitted. I don't know how that happened.
We're not supposed to see it now?
For me, it ain't hurts.
Counsel, you're going to have your witness refer to this document, is that correct?
Correct.
This document been to file?
That document has been, is considered an exhibit now, because the image is shown now, that wasn't on there before. We should mark it as an exhibit.
Let's have that marked A1 with today's date, and would you describe it as you're marking it?
A1 is a copy of the signage plan sheet, three of my set, that shows now the image of the proposed sign.
Counsel, you would want to have your proof sheet marked for identification purposes only as A2 with today's date.
Okay, thank you.
So, referring to Mr. Higgins' report regarding the sign relief that we're requesting, two simple sign variances, the square footage of the sign is compliant, but the setback is not, 15 feet is required, we're proposing two. The existing fence is about a foot off the property line, so we're proposing to put the sign just behind the fence, and the secondary requirement is that a monument sign be installed. If we were to install a monument sign, which is a sign low to the ground, typically 18 inches to 2 feet above grade, the sign would be behind the fence, you wouldn't see it. So, for practicality, we're seeking relief just to allow it to be elevated above the fence, just above the fence. We have a 4-foot fence, the sign will be at 5 feet, the bottom of it, and to allow us to place it closer to the fence, so it can be seen. The intent here is primarily a directional sign, just so somebody can note, see the site from Monmouth Ave, which is the more traveled roadway. The entrance for the site's out in South Lincoln, probably about 300 feet down South Lincoln, so the intent here is really just to identify people who are trying to find the place, that they can see it from Monmouth and get to the site.
Counsel, you representing that A2 would be what the sign would have on it in terms of details?
Yes.
Jim and Bill, you have any problems with what's been submitted?
No. No.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, that's a 10-foot sign we're looking at.
Total height, yes.
Is it lit?
It will be externally lit, there'll be lights on the ground.
No, no, can't do that, got to do the down lighting. Mount them on posts and shine them down.
Shine them down, okay. We'll comply with the requirement.
Do you want a condition subsequent, so that?
I believe the ordinance requires, the site lighting ordinance requires.
All right, so you have to understand.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good reason to grant the variance, is it'll help protect the midnight, the night sky, lighting will be downlit, not more than 200 inches in terms of illumination.
So, if the board wants to consider passing the application, you'd have to submit the details to satisfy the board engineer, you understand that?
I understand, yes.
And the fence that's blocking the view, is, did you say you wanted higher?
No, the fence stays exactly where it is, it's an existing aluminum fence, it's a black aluminum fence, looks like the old-style wrought iron, but just where it's located, especially as you're traveling down South Lincoln, you don't really see through the fence until you're much closer to it.
So, it shucks the view as you're kind of driving in.
Exactly.
Who owns that fence?
The client does, the applicant does.
Anyone else have a question?
Nope.
I have a question. I know you have a really, you have a hedge the length of the fence.
For most of it, yes, there's some landscaping.
Is the hedge going to obscure your sign, or?
I believe they can maintain the hedge to the height of the fence, such that the sign could be seen.
All right.
And so close to the road, any line of sight, Bill? No, I looked at that, it's not in any sight triangle.
We've set it about 35 feet back from the intersection, intentionally to make sure that there's no sight triangle issue.
Anyone else? No? Anyone in the public have a question? There's no one there.
Counsel, you don't have any other witnesses, do you?
I do not, I have the Director of Services and Operations, Mr. Sutherland, here, if you had any questions for him, but I didn't think that was necessary, really.
Anyone? No, I do not? No one does? Okay.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second. Roll call. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion, close the hearing.
I second.
Close the meeting. Yeah, I second closing the meeting.
Roll call.
Yes. Good enough. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.